I'd like to call to order this special hearing of the Borough Council of Gettysburg for October 28, 2024, 6:30 p.m. The purpose of this special meeting is to conduct a public hearing in order for the Borough Council to receive comments and recommendations of interested individuals residing within the Borough of Gettysburg concerning the request on behalf of Ravi Singh for the municipal, intermunicipal transfer of a restaurant liquor license, license number R-21262, LID number 58226, for use in the Borough of Gettysburg at certain premises located at 517 Baltimore Street for the purpose of the Borough Council rendering a decision to either approve or disapprove the request for an intermunicipal transfer of the liquor license. The subject restaurant liquor license is being, currently being held in safekeeping by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board and was previously issued for use at licensed premises located at 985 Baltimore Pike, Gettysburg Cumberland Township, Adams County, Pennsylvania. And then I'll just read that part. Request for intermunicipal transfer of restaurant liquor license number R-21262, LID number 58226, from 985 Baltimore Pike, Gettysburg Cumberland Township, Adams County, Pennsylvania, to the Borough of Gettysburg, Adams County, Pennsylvania. Who takes over at this point?
Staff has provided a copy of the current schematic of the Gateway Minimart. Representative for the applicant is available to discuss the specific use of the property. The prior license was at the location, 985 Baltimore Pike, previously Lincoln Social. So it does appear to be a different type of use than what the license was previously used as. If you have any questions regarding the use, this is a great opportunity to do so. But otherwise, I'd ask that the applicant provide more detail.
Sure. Sir, would you mind going to the podium there? If you could grab that second microphone that's on the desk there and take it up?
Is that close enough?
Yeah. So can you give us the background information on your proposal here?
Yeah, the convenience store that's there now, Ravi's just looking to expand business a little bit. You know, back in the day, it used to be a Sheetz and it had food. And he's wanting to increase business, bring in some sandwiches, and bring in the beer and the liquor license to utilize for the people walking through town and customers, visitors. And so he's asking permission to be able to transfer that license down. And then we'd be making application to just do some revisions to the building on the inside to accommodate it. On this drawing, it shows a proposed seating. It's not there now. There's another aisle way there. But some changes would be made in order to accommodate the seating so that the liquor license could be utilized here for beer and wine.
Can you tell me, does this plan involve turning this existing toilet room into a public restroom that is ADA accessible?
Yes. Yeah. Actually, yes.
So the plan is that they would become a cafe?
I would say that's really a better look at it, even though they're going to have the convenience side, it would be more of a cafe style. And hopefully even out onto that patio, we'll be, I don't know, asking maybe if we could enclose that as a couple of things that we're hoping to do.
Do we have any guidance from the Liquor Control Board on there?
We do not.
Okay.
I would think it's going to be very similar to what you see in Sheetz and Rudders. Nothing else. I mean, nothing more than that.
So would you just, would they just be selling packaged beverages or would there be taps?
No, no, no. That's not a restaurant style right now, to the best of my knowledge. It's just for...
This is to-go service?
Yes.
Okay.
It's to-go services?
Yeah.
So you can't sit at these tables?
No, you can. That's the table. You have to have it.
It's like a little...
So I shouldn't say it.
It's like a little casino.
Right.
Okay.
So I just wanted to clarify. So those booths that you have here, so people can be served the alcohol there? Or is it just takeout only?
I was under the impression it was only for takeout only. But you have to have the seats in order to be able to sell the beer. You have to have food and you have to have seating for 30 people in order to qualify for that liquor license, to the best of my understanding.
But they wouldn't be served in this establishment?
Right. I think you could drink it there. You can, you can, you can sit and have your beer. I mean, if you buy the can, you can actually sit there and drink it.
Yeah, I think this is much like the Beer Garden at Giant.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And for 30 people, the one commode is enough?
No, we'll probably go into a two, two full bathroom, two full handicap, male and female. There's a second bathroom behind there that just, all they did was show how they were going to, everything to the right side of this building is still the same as it is now. The left side, they showed the changes they're going to make to seating. But we'll come make a full application to convert this over to have two full bathrooms because anytime you have food, we have to have male and female.
Sir, I'm sorry. I neglected to ask you your name for the record.
I'm Richard Myford.
And what is your relation to the applicant?
I'm a partner with him on a project here in Gettysburg, and I'm also his builder, developer for his projects.
Questions, anybody?
Can you help me understand exactly where this is on Baltimore? What is it currently?
It's that gas station in the wedge.
Right across from the hotel, right on the...
Before 15.
Where Steinware and Baltimore split.
Where Steinware and Baltimore split. So it's the fork on the road there.
Yeah.
Across from, gotcha. There is an existing kitchen?
There is an, there was a kitchen there, yes. It's just not in use at the time. It's everything that wraps around behind that sales area, that there's the three compartment sink. And there's a couple of things that are back there in that rear section.
Yeah, it's interesting that it is a restaurant license. I guess that's what, that's what you want to get because the transfer of a restaurant liquor license is very specific. It has to be a restaurant liquor license. It is different than the Giant where you get beer and wine to go, even though they have a cafe there. It's quite different. So it is going to be a restaurant with food.
Can I make one call? Can I call him real quick, just so I make sure that I don't...
No, I'm just making sure that we are all understanding it is a restaurant liquor license transfer.
Yeah, I don't think we would be able to accommodate phone calls during the hearing here.
Okay, that's fine.
So my understanding of the cafe license, like a Giant, and I think this is probably what happens at Sheetz as well, is that you have to be preparing food and you have to have seating. So that allows them to sell alcohol, beer and wine specifically, to go. But you can, you know, sit and have a beer at Giant as long as you're also eating. You can't just sit there and drink. The license is pretty specific, I believe. So if that's the same intended usage and licensing here, it seems like there's some pretty stringent guidelines. And I think you would have to see the kitchen operational before any alcohol sales could be approved. So I'm not even sure that we could transfer the license. I don't know that. And I guess without hearing an opinion from the PALCB, I don't know that we know what we can do.
I mean, I think that...
Well, I think the LCB, all right, I don't want to interrupt you guys.
I know that they'll, they'll come out to do several site visits. What this step, I think, is, is just, do we, the Borough of Gettysburg, are we approving, if they so choose to grant them this license? Are we approving that, yes, it can be transferred from Cumberland to Adams County to, excuse me, from Cumberland to Borough of Gettysburg? But I just, it's just interesting from what I'm hearing, you certainly could have a restaurant liquor license and only choose to provide beer and wine, but you are able to do all of it with a restaurant liquor license as long as you have a fully functioning kitchen, food, and plenty of seating. Looks like you do in plenty of restrooms. It looks like you do from the proposal. I'm not against this transfer. I know PLCB will come in and do several site visits before it's able to be operational, though.
Yeah, the LCB will come in and make sure that everything is set. You know, you have the right seating, you have the food, all that. The wine to go is a separate license, though, that you have to add on. I don't know if that's included with this or not because you can do beer to go, but for the additional wine to go license, it's, it's different. So I don't know if that was something...
And now they have the new cocktails to go as well. The pre-made cocktails in a can licenses can do that.
That's correct. All right, other questions?
Will the pumps stay?
Yes, the gas pumps will stay. It'll still stay a convenience store. It'll just, hopefully, grow out a little bit nicer, that's all. Really, just a, just a nice place to come, sit, have lunch, have a sandwich, have a snack. There's a hotel there. I'd like to offer the beer and the wine. Certainly not as a bar or anything like that, but, you know, that's not intended.
How many seats did they say you have to have?
30. To maintain 30 seats.
Like I said, I just, I think it's odd that it's the restaurant liquor license, just looking at this and hearing what your plan is. But if that's what you, the route that you want to go, I think there's a different route you could go. But if that's what PLCB has to offer and that's what you want to go with, I don't have a problem with it. I just think it's a, I would have gone with a different license myself.
I have a question. Where are you going to put 30 seats in?
They're on, they're on the front. They are booths. Right on the lower side, right in there are the booths that are going to go in.
So you're going to take...
One row shelving out?
Thank you. Because I shop there.
Okay.
So where, where are you, you're going to take stuff out?
I'm going to take a row out. I'm going to rearrange the back wall. I'm going to supply a plan to the Borough asking to enclose that patio as part of what we want to do. And if we're allowed to do that, we might put the seating out there. If we can't do that, we'll leave the seating right here. We're re-proposing it on the front.
What patio?
There's a, then there's a paved patio out in front of their property that comes out to the sidewalk.
That by...
It's got a retaining wall up around it. And it used to have patio seats out there. There's electric run up in spots where tables used to sit. And so I will be asking if we could enclose that as like the cafe side. But again, that's, you know, once we know that everything can be done, then we'll come and make the applications for the construction.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions from council members? So I'd like to hear from the solicitor, if you don't mind. Can you give us a little bit of background on our responsibilities here?
Sure. Of course, and I think we'll need to make sure that the record reflects that because one of the critical aspects of this is for the Borough Council to have the opportunity to hear the, any comments from interested individuals who are residing within the Borough and their comments and recommendations. I believe that we have no members of the public here to provide any of that information for your consideration. I would note that the public hearing was advertised twice in a newspaper of general circulation, Gettysburg Times, and that occurred on October the 18th and again on October the 22nd. The Pennsylvania liquor control, or the liquor code provides that in an intermunicipal transfer, and this is an intermunicipal transfer because it's a proposed transfer of a license from Cumberland Township into the Borough, that the receiving municipality has to essentially approve that transfer, if you will. And kind of your, your duty is basically to determine whether or not it would affect the welfare, health, peace, and morals of the Borough or its residents. In fact, the liquor control code provides that the receiving municipality must approve the requested transfer unless it finds that doing so would adversely affect the welfare, health, peace, and morals of the Borough or its residents. So in order to do that, the LCB requires that you take formal action, and that would be in the form of adopting a resolution or enacting an ordinance. We've done this in the past. We've used the resolution format for that, for that matter. I have provided to you two alternate motions. The first being one, directing the preparation of a resolution to approve the proposed intermunicipal transfer. The second, and the alternative, would be for you to, or to direct the preparation of a resolution to disapprove the proposed intermunicipal transfer. And of course, I mean, it's fairly narrow in terms of what you can do in that regard, as I indicated. I mean, you basically, and if you are to disapprove it, you've got to determine that, that the liquor license or the transfer of the liquor license into the Borough would adversely affect the welfare, health, peace, and morals of the Borough and its residents.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that. So I think, Mr. Carr, you have it exactly right. The question before us is whether we'll allow the transfer, not whether the requirements of whatever particulars for the license are met. That's going to be up to the PALCB. Does anybody have a strong feeling that another beer retailer in town would add to the moral degradation of our community?
Could I just say one thing before?
Sure.
It is a beer and, it is just for beer and wine, not for liquor.
Understood. Any strong feelings here? Okay. Would anybody care to make a motion? Whoever wants to make a motion could choose to read either the approval or the disapproval based on your strong feelings, and then we would vote.
I'll move. A motion to direct the solicitor to prepare a proposed resolution for consideration of the Borough Council at its November 12, 2024 monthly general business meeting for the purpose of approving the applicant's requests for the intermunicipal transfer of a restaurant liquor license, license number R-21262, LID number, or LID number 128683, from previously approved licensed premises located at 985 Baltimore Pike in Cumberland Township, to the proposed licensed premises located at 517 Baltimore Street within the Borough of Gettysburg as the receiving municipality.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. We will vote on this matter at our November meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We are adjourned. Good evening, everybody. Thank you all for being here. We're going to call to get, to order this budget work session for the Borough of Gettysburg, Borough Council for Monday, October 28th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. We do have really a colossal amount of stuff to get through tonight and in our next meeting. We may end up having to go a little bit long both these nights to get it all in. Some upcoming events surrounding this process for the public's benefit. Next Monday, November 4th at 7:00 PM, we will most likely have another budget work session. We had scheduled, if necessary, one for Tuesday, the 5th, but we're going to have to find a new date for that. I would propose Wednesday, the 6th, maybe. The 5th is election night, so that's just not going to be workable. So that's an, if needed, when do we have to set that date by?
You could, you could set that date at the, at the...
Monday.
Yeah, on that November 4th meeting. You've got plenty of time.
All right. November 12th will be the regular monthly council business meeting where we would vote to advertise the 2025 budget. Wednesday, the 20th, we would post the draft budget for public review, and the vote would occur on December 9th at our usual business meeting at 7:00 PM. Just a reminder to everybody, trick or treat is this Thursday, October 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Please, everybody be safe. Motorists in town, please slow down. Please be aware, there will be many little tiny people running around excitedly, out of their minds on sugar. That takes us to our first public comment section for the evening. This first section is restricted to items appearing on the agenda, and that would be the budget. We ask that you please use the podium, please give us your name and address of residence, and please limit yourself to five minutes.
Hi, my name is Chris Webb. Bo Brinkman and I, in January of...
Is the green light on on the...
No, thank you, Matt. Hi, my name is Chris Webb. Bo and Brinkman and I, in January of 2023, produced our movie, A Gettysburg Christmas. We worked diligently with our borough, local businesses and almost 300 residents of Adams County. Following these experiences, Bo and I were inspired to open the Gettysburg Film Commission. One of the most important objectives, besides bringing film production into the area, is maintaining a film-friendly town, understanding the needs of the production company and maintaining relationships. Checking in after filming with property and business owners is imperative. As you are considering your 2025 budget, we, the Film Commission, appreciate your consideration and supporting of our free outdoor community program, Cinema Under the Stars on Seminary Ridge, through your community development budget. We have just completed our 2024 season and have secured our dates in 2025. Our goal is to bring iconic, thought-provoking classic films to the community. The films are screened on a 30-foot wide screen with a professional cinema package sound system to give the audience a true cinematic experience. Audiences can enjoy local musicians, visit food trucks the hour before every screening. Our co-host, Jim Oden, film historian and professor at the Gettysburg College, gives a history and social impact of the film before screening begins. So what impact does Cinema Under the Stars have to our county? Each screening, we have five. Each screening, we hire a four-man crew to set up and tear down the 30-foot screen and the sound system. We hire local musicians. We invite food trucks as our food vendors with no fees. We have our Film Commission intern program, students to help organize and run the operations during the Cinema Under the Stars. New to our 2025 season is our Free Popcorn Youth Program fundraiser. Each screening will highlight an Adams County youth program. The youth will serve the popcorn to our audience, and all donations at their popcorn and informational booth will be 100% donation to their program. This will give the community a chance to give back to our youth. We rent our space from the seminary for all to enjoy the gem on the west end of the borough, movies on the ridge. We use our local advertisement tools, social media as well, and our local insurance companies for all of our liability insurance needs. We have a sponsorship program to help support the cost of the screenings and offer incentives to our sponsors. We have applied to the Robert C. Huffman Charitable Endowment Trust as well. Most of all, Cinema Under the Stars leaves a lasting impression to our audience of all ages. As we gather on the ridge, conversing with old friends and making new ones, locals and tourists converge together on this precious land. The synergy in the air is tangible and very joyful. So I'll leave you with a quote from a very special attendee at the Cinema Under the Stars 2024, with her parents' permission to share. I asked her, "You have come to all the screenings but one. What does classic movies mean to you?" Adeline, age eight. "I like going to the Cinema Under the Stars because I get to spend time with my family, and I like to watch movies that were made a long time ago. I think that they are more entertaining than newer movies. In the classic movies, they have things that aren't in the new movies. There are no cell phones in the classic movies. I like the phones in the boxes on the side of the road." The movie nights make me feel happy because I get to watch old things, especially in black and white. "I get to wonder what the colors were." Adeline, age eight. "Whether you're making a movie or whether you're watching a movie, you're creating an experience that will never leave you. Thank you for considering us in 2025. We're keeping film in Adams County."
All right, thank you. Public comment.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for your service. First, I'd like to start by thanking Borough Manager, Mr. Charles Gabel, for meeting with me this afternoon. I think we had a really productive session. And thank you for letting me get on and speak publicly tonight.
Sir, could you please give us your name and address of residence?
Yes. My name is Al Moyer, and I live at 306 Oak Lane in Strabane Township. I am the new director of the Gettysburg Area Recreation Authority. It's been a real pleasure getting to know the staff out there. We have a small, part-time staff, but also we have a group of seven directors that are very passionate about the rec park. My family and I are very passionate about the rec park, which is kind of what attracted me to taking on a full-time job after having a career and an encore career. This is my second encore career. The people out there treat the rec park, that 52 acres that I consider a community treasure, pretty much like their own place, and it's really cool to see that happen and be a part of that. So first and foremost, I want to thank you all for your support of the rec park, your ongoing, long support, and it's really appreciated, not just by the people in the borough or Cumberland Township, but all of the other surrounding areas. And Manager Gabel and I were just talking about that a little bit, and what we might be able to do to possibly expand some of our partnerships out there. I see that as one of my, one of my many missions. As you solicit your community's feedback regarding anything related to recreational activities or anything at all that we can partner with you or help you out with in whatever regard that might be, please keep us in mind, and please don't hesitate to contact me or anyone else out there. And I would love to host any of you or all of you at any time that you're able to make it out. This is only my third week on the job, so you don't know what you don't know, but I really have been impressed with the amount of traffic that's at the park. My family and I spend a lot of time out there, but until you are actually out there for the better part of the day, you don't realize just how many groups are utilizing the park, whether it be the Charlie Steiner Building, the pavilions, the dog park, the, it goes on and on. But just real quickly, it's been great having the farmer's market out there, and that has really evolved and really growing. Reza has really done a nice job with that. Besides the ballgames, the pavilion usage, Mount St. Mary's recently ran a baseball tournament and a clinic out there. I give Aaron a lot of credit, the person who I replaced, in bringing in world classrooms to the park and utilizing our pavilion and utilizing the battlefield and so on. The Christmas fair, we've already got about eight vendors and working with Destination Gettysburg and partnering with them on the craft show, so that's, that's kind of exciting. Obviously, the playground areas and, you know, the dog, the dog park, we just don't have one. We have two, one for small and one for large dogs, and we even have, you know, the water fountains for the pups. Currently, we are in the process of negotiating new memorandums of understanding. Our baseball, our youth baseball and our youth, youth football and cheerleading, their MOUs have expired. So I'm in the process of meeting with their boards and negotiating what we'll be doing in the future in that regard, and that's going really well. I've been really impressed with the boards of our volunteer programs. But besides that, what's also kind of exciting, I'm having some preliminary talks with club soccer in the Gettysburg area, and they're looking for a permanent home. It's very preliminary, but there is a chance, if things continue to go well in our discussions, that we'll, we'll be having soccer out there. As you're well aware, youth football and baseball primarily is about 90% guys. I think it's long overdue that we get some gender balance out there, and I can tell you from my own experience with my grandkids, the girls' soccer program is just as competitive and fierce as the guys, every bit as. So we're working with them, and then also I'm understanding that there's some interest in possibly starting lacrosse in the spring season when youth football's not there so that we can utilize that field.
I'm going to ask you to try to wrap up your thoughts here.
Will do. Thank you. Sorry about that. And then, in working with Manager Gabel, one of the things that's on my list is to, is to develop a capital improvement plan for you all to see, a three- to five-year plan, and there's, there's plenty of things that we need. We're looking at establishing a group that would give recommendation authority to our directors called the Friends of the Park, that when we have fundraising and we have areas when we need volunteers, that they would be on call to help us out. And I'm just hoping to reach out to all the service organizations in the area. With that, I'm done. Thanks again for all your support, and don't hesitate to visit the rec park and visit with me and share any ideas that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for taking the time to come and talk to us. It's appreciated. Is there any other public comment? This is public comment. Public comment.
I'm Sue Sipperlee. I live at 314 North Stratton Street in Gettysburg. I was not able to attend the last budget meeting on October 21st in person due to a conflict with two other meetings that night. other meetings that night. Got it. I watched the community meeting recording of that budget work session concerning the broadcasting of planning commission meetings. A request was made earlier this year to fund broadcasts of the planning commission meetings because the comprehensive rezoning of the entire borough of Gettysburg is a major undertaking with far-reaching and long-lasting impacts on individual properties and the future of the borough as a whole. The appointed rezoning task force spent a year in meetings that were not open to the public, raising the question of open meetings compliance. Now that the draft rezoning is available and under review by the planning commission, community members are seeing the proposal for the first time. And there are significant changes that need to be analyzed and discussed publicly. The Gettysburg Station project is the largest and most significant development we have had in Gettysburg. Review is scheduled to start at the November 20th Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission will make the final decision on the project after thorough review. Last week, in the discussion of the request for broadcast, the planning of the planning commission meetings, council members and the manager said the following things. We have 10 authorities, boards and commissions, and we can't broadcast them all. To my knowledge, there's never been a request to broadcast GMA, the Shade Tree Commission, or other routine boards or committees. The Stormwater Authority is broadcast by default as its meetings precede the council meetings. Anybody can attend the meetings. That's true, but not always possible. The meetings get press coverage. Press often use the videos to write their stories. People can record the meeting for free with their phone and put it on Facebook. The quality and availability would not be as good, especially if I did it. Viewership numbers for the privately-funded planning commission meetings from May 20th, 2024 through September 16th showed the average number of viewers per meeting on YouTube is 50. The average number on Facebook is 386 and community media website is 195. Community media does not have access to the numbers for people who watched on Comcast, Channel 12. I don't think the elected officials realize the amount of interest there is on the part of the community. Eventually, council members will vote on the rezoning ordinance. I know some of you have attended planning commission meetings, but it's important to have the convenience of a video when schedules conflict. Finally, it is important to have a record of what was said and how decisions were made. Outreach and transparency are topics often touted as goals when running for office. This is a good example of when transparency is important. Community members have donated $2,160 so far, hoping that this expense would be covered in the 2025 budget. The hope is that when you realize how many people are watching the meetings, you will revisit the recent decision to not fund this item. The broadcast and recording of meetings concerning the borough rezoning and the station project is essential for transparency in our local government. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? I'm not seeing any, so we're going to go into tonight's agenda. We are doing a deep dive on Fund One, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we left off with 410. Is that correct?
It is, but we also had a few other requests of the council. So if I may just take a couple minutes prior to that.
Sure.
Since we are starting this budget cycle with a sizable deficit, it was asked that we create a visual representation of hypothetical millage rates. So I created that for your reference, just to keep this at the top of your mind as you're making your financial decisions developing the 2025 budget. There is $506,795 of assessed valuation that is taxable in the borough. The, the evaluation of the borough is significantly higher than that, but this is the 55% of property assessed in the borough that the council can reclaim property tax from. A mill is defined as $1 per $1,000 of property assessment. So if you do that math, for every mill, the borough will receive $506,795. That's a typo. It says 506 million. It's $506,795 per one mill. The question then is, you know, me as a private property owner who has a single-family home, what would a one mill mean to me? So if you have a property that is assessed at $1 million, that's at one mill, that's $1,000 of property tax per year. And so I just did a generic, you know, $250,000 decrease. So if you own a property, a single-family home that's in the $300,000 range, that'd be $300 if you were assessed one mill. What does that mean for an average monthly budget? So if you have a $300,000 home and the council were to ask that you consider an additional millage rate of $300, that would come to about $25 per month. So just keep that in mind when, when you're thinking about any possible millage increases. Member Berger created an idea for us to consider to help fill the budget deficit. Currently, we have a three-tiered parking rate system in the borough. We call that dynamic parking rates. The most in-demand rates, locations, rather, are the highest per hour. So Lincoln Square is always the first to fill up. That's why it's $2 on Lincoln Square. Our least utilized spaces are our cheapest rate of $1 an hour. The question Mr. Berger asked is if we increase that $1 an hour to $1.50 an hour, what would that do? Parking manager Fissell did a deep dive on these numbers this past week and determined the following. There are various categories where you find these $1 meters. There's $12 meters. There's three-hours meters. A few three-hour meters actually are at $1 an hour. The county lot and the borough lot, which are right across street from each other on East Middle Street. In the aggregate, if all of those meters were increased to $1.50 an hour based on past revenue collections last year, or in 2023, it was the year we used, that'd be about $191,000 of additional revenue. What does that do? I actually plugged that number in with an assumption that council would be interested in that. And if you are, that would decrease your deficit to $675,000, which then brings us to tonight's discussion on your staffing levels and other expenditures that you're interested in funding. Any questions on that high-level math?
Any questions? It's very helpful. Does anybody have a strong feeling they'd like to voice on the subject of addressing those parking rates? And I do want to remind everybody in the room and those listening at home, this would be the first adjustment to those meters in seven years.
Matt, I believe at the last meeting, thank you for that. I believe, I thought at the last meeting, we asked also for some more comparison research from some other towns as well in regards to parking. Do we have anything to report on that?
I believe the only one that was asked for was Lancaster for a comparison. And that was, they are $2.50 an hour for their on-street parking. Their parking garage goes, let me see, it was like $2 for the first hour, $2 for the second hour, a dollar per hour thereafter, with a maximum of 15 per day.
I did, I looked at some historical towns kind of around the country, just to get an idea, the ones that would be more in line with, with Gettysburg. And so I found the cheapest was Jamestown at 50 cents an hour, Williamsburg, a dollar an hour, Charlottesville, a dollar an hour, Princeton, 2.25 an hour, New Haven, a dollar to $2, depending on where you're at with it, and Annapolis at $3. So there's a range.
That does sound like there is a range, but it also sounds like we would be comfortably within that range with the proposed increases with probably some headroom, too. Thank you for doing that. I don't know about y'all, but I don't think a day goes by somebody doesn't talk to me about parking rates in this town. Whether I'm at work or just on the street or volunteering, somebody talks about parking. And I do my best to maintain a level emotional state in those moments. I do try to remind folks that we really only have three revenue streams available to us: property tax, occupational tax, and parking fees. There are other smaller things that contribute to our overall budget, but essentially, and in a very real way, the meter fees are one of the only financial contributions the visitors make to our budget. They support our businesses, they support our community in many other ways. I don't want to discount that. But when it comes to direct support of our government and the first response services we need to be able to provide for 2 million visitors a year, the only real contribution we get is, is the parking. As Member Lawson has done a very extensive deep dive on the pillow tax, which absolutely helps with funding our police, we really get a pittance of what's collected at the county level. On, on every, you know, it's, it's $5 on every $100 collected, we're getting less than 30 cents of that. And, you know, we've, we've tried to make the argument that nobody is visiting Adams County if not for Gettysburg, and the, the law is structured in a way that we're going to only ever get that tiny amount. The pillow tax does not even come close to parking revenues. It's, it's not even, it's not even a tenth of what we get from parking. So I think we do have a responsibility to look hard at this parking adjustment. Thoughts?
Well, and the other, just to piggyback on what you said, President Moon, I think we've talked a little bit, but not in great depth because it would involve a lot of other areas. But we've, we've talked about like what a P O U R tax would look like, P-O-U-R tax in Gettysburg in terms of trying to tap into the tourism and the visitors who would be here. But that, that's going down a different path, and there are a lot more hoops to jump through. I, I think if we could put back that one image where you go into the county and the borough parking, parking lots, and, and then the street parking, what, what I took away, and let me know, tell me if this is, I've oversimplified it, but when I think about like visitors, I, I don't see as many visitors. I think probably more people who are local, locals who are using it for business or would be using maybe the county lot and the borough lot on Middle Street. And so the larger increase is, would come in the three-hour meters and the 12-hour meters. So I like this idea that Mr. Berger had last week. I think it is a way to try to get into, you know, a way in which we can have visitors contribute to the, to the borough budget and the services that we provide, which are many, actually.
So is what you're saying there that adjusting the borough lot and the county lot is, it sounds like what you're saying is that that's penalizing locals and...
Oh, I'm not saying, I'm just saying that it's, well, there's not as much revenue coming from those, I guess, is what I'm, so I just, but I'd be okay with that. I'm comfortable with that. I don't know if others have other thoughts about that.
The, the other side of that coin is, we mentioned this last week, that we do now have the LPP program, which is specifically designed to benefit locals, those that live locally here for $35 a month. You can park pretty conveniently throughout the municipality, not on the square, but you can park within a block or two of where your, your destination is. So even if there were locals that usually parked in the county lot or the, the borough lot, they too would be eligible for the LPP.
Sure.
And as we've said in the past, I mean, this is a pedestrian-friendly town. We, we try to make it pedestrian-friendly. We're trying to encourage people to park and then walk. I think that's really important. And so I definitely support this.
Other thoughts?
Sure. I was going to say it's a small price to pay, I think, when we have so much tourism and commerce coming through our town and, you know, we have to make sure our streets are, are taken care of and our infrastructure looks good and it offsets that. And I think it's also a small price to pay when we have the convenience of the Pay to Park app. I know I love the app myself. I've avoided probably several tickets because I can easily add to the meter without running to find where I parked or figuring out what's going on with my parking and how long I have. So yeah, I think an increase is warranted at this point.
I would be in favor of the increase. I actually think it's a little low. I would be in favor of, of the three-hour and the 12-hour going up to $2 an hour and leaving the county and the borough at one, raising the county and the borough at 150. I think that we're, we're counting pennies here. And again, this is one of the only ways that we can get some income to balance a budget. When we're talking about needing more police, when we're talking about needing more public works, when we're talking about what can we cut from this budget, I don't see a lot of cuts happening in the budget. I see we need to bring in more income. So I, I just, you know, I hear the same from, from locals as well, you know, about the parking. But again, there's the parking garage, which we're trying to push people toward. Locals should know where that is. And we do have the local parking permit, which I think is a great benefit. So, and certainly wouldn't be these, wouldn't be these rates. It would be a nice discount for them. So I, I would encourage the local parking permit for sure for the locals.
All right. So staff's suggestion was estimated to raise $191,000 in revenue. And if we were to follow Mr. Carr's recommendation of going to two hours just on the 12 and three-hour meters, but leaving the county and borough lots at 150, that would raise, it looks like approximately another 90,000-ish.
Sure.
But you could also raise the $1.50 in the first blocks to two.
No, I'm sorry. It would actually be closer to 150.
And again, as usual, I'm okay with being the lone voice on some things. I just have to throw it out there for discussion.
So Mr. Carr's proposal could potentially be generating $340,000 a year.
Two dollars.
Which absolutely goes a long way to plugging this hole.
Square, so I can reprogram them to be $2, not the dollar an hour meters.
I just want to underscore, I asked a question last week because I want to, with the deficit that we have, I want to minimize tax increases as much as possible.
Sure.
And also I want to keep the 14 police staffing. So I'm interested in discussing Mr. Carr's proposal because I do think that will go a long way to, to mitigate our tax increase and, and keeping our staffing levels to where they are now.
Mr. President, if I can say, I agree with Mr. Carr's proposal. I think it's a good idea.
So, and if I can just make a quick, so the current software that we have to reprogram the meters, we have current rates programmed in there. So right now, we have like three and 12-hour meters are a dollar. There's some of the three-hour meters that are $1.50, and there's three-hour meters that are $2 an hour, and there's dollar, 12-hour meters that are $1.50. So we cannot, the programming is... So we cannot, the programming is non-existent anymore. We cannot program, we cannot add any more fees. So that rate that we, the rates that we currently have, we can update to what we have, but we cannot add. So I cannot add a twelve dol- twelve-hour meter at two dollars. You'd need to upgrade all your meters, you'd need to change the kiosks, you'd need to go to app-only, the meters are.
How would we adjust the current twelve-hour meters from a dollar to a dollar fifty as is proposed here?
Because we currently have twelve hours at a dollar fifty at the parking garage. The meters in front of the parking garage are currently a dollar fifty an hour for twelve hours.
There's a, a device that's programmed, and we are the last people apparently on earth that own that device. And it's not possible to reprogram that to something other than we currently have without purchasing new meters or technology.
So the highest we could go is?
Not following this at all.
Correct. A dollar fifty on the twelve-hour meters.
Becca, how else would you describe the, the issue with our machine? So people can understand what we're challenged with.
I don't know how else to, so we have the machine. Currently we have three hours for two dollars, three hours for a dollar fifty.
I'm sorry, what machine are we talking about? What is this machine?
It reprograms the rates on the.
You plug this into each individual meter and set rates on them?
Correct.
Okay.
But they're already pre-programmed. We've paid for that to have it programmed over the years.
And we can't do that again?
No. They were, they are refusing. They said they do not have the technology to reprogram it. You have to buy new meters.
It's like Microsoft when they say they're not gonna support Windows eight anymore. They're not going to support.
It's actually operating on Win- uh, Windows ten, so it's not on their computers anymore. It's not on our computers anymore, so there's no way to reprogram this handheld so that we can reprogram the meters.
Cool.
When was the last time we purchased that?
Tw- fifteen years. I mean, we last did the rate change about seven years ago.
But this, this, this software, this machine for the parking department, when was the last time?
Twenty years ago, maybe?
Twenty years ago?
Well, it was last reprogrammed in twenty seventeen.
It was last reprogrammed in twenty seventeen.
When council adjusted the rates then.
But now this company is saying we can't reprogram it again, which means we have to upgrade. And what was that last upgrade cost estimate?
You're talking about purchasing six hundred new meters, which is cost prohibitive. We, we would be much better off going to kiosks.
So we're being, essentially we're being restricted by, by the current hardware that we have.
That's correct.
We're, we're, we're operating on a, on a Windows eight or ten when we, we need to be in twenty twenty-five with the rest of the world. Uh-huh. I'm not, I'm not flushing my anger towards you just because I'm looking at you. That is disgusting.
Yeah. These meters are from nineteen ninety. I mean, so it's.
It's just we, and our one, I'm gonna stop. I appreciate the staff work on this, but this is really very, very frustrating.
So we can tweak rates within limits, and I think we've explained the limits. And then if we want to go a different direction moving down the road, we should figure out how to invest in that. But in this budget, we don't have the room to do that right now.
No, we certainly don't.
Nor could we do it next year or the following or the following.
No.
We're, we're being capped. We're being capped.
Being kneecapped.
We're being capped and cut off at the kneecapped. We're being, with this specific, you know, it's like, how do we grow into the next?
And do we continue to pay licensing to this company? Or are we just dead, done with them forever until we buy something new?
We have that little device until it decides to quit.
And then we're just done?
Well, we'd have to move in a different type of direction for parking rates or parking software and/or hardware.
And how long have we been aware of this situation with this technology?
Today. I mean, that they were not reprogramming it today. I mean, like I said, these meters are from nineteen ninety, so I'm not sure this all.
We just happened to coincidentally find out today that they're no longer supporting this device?
I tried to contact them last week, and they just got back to me today. Most of their voicemails are full and you cannot leave a message. I've tried, I tried four different numbers. I tried emails. I tried calling, uh, multiple people last week. And, um, the sales rep just reached out to me today. No, actually, I reached back out to him and he finally answered today.
That is one of the reasons in twenty nineteen, I think it was. If you remember on the square, we piloted a program where there were kiosks on the square. And we also piloted a program where we replaced the meter heads with, um, solar panelled or battery-operated devices that would take credit cards and coins. And they were universally panned by the locals. So we pivoted back to the nineteen ninety technology.
Cool.
I don't know if everyone remembers that, but it wasn't that long ago. We did pilot.
I remember that.
We had three different models, I think, throughout the borough.
Yep. So, okay. So then we need a new, I propose that we have a new, this is a great dock. Now I propose we have a new one with the actual of what if we were to go to whatever we can go to, the one fifty, the two.
This is it. This is the limit, one fifty. This is it.
No, apparently there are some twelve-hour meters that are two dollars.
No, not the twelve-hour, the doll- so currently you have the square at three doll- three hours for two doll- a dollar and, I'm sorry. It's two dollars an hour in the square. The first block, Steinware Avenue, is a dollar fifty an hour. But those are three-hour meters too, so we could do a block out from the square to do two dollars an hour as well. And so your block out in Steinware would be two dollars an hour with a square. And then we do have the capability to do the twelve-hour meters, we can do them at a dollar fifty. I mean, yeah, the dollar an hour meters, we can do it, a dollar fifty for twelve hours or three hours. Because there are two hundred and seventy-five of those meters that are twelve hours. There's probably about two hundred of those three-hour meters that are currently a dollar. And to Patty's, that the, the borough and the county lot are not as busy and don't, uh, make as much money. There's only twenty-four meters in the borough lot and twenty meters in the county lot. So compared to the two hundred and two hundred and seventy-five everywhere else. So those, that's why they are making more money because there's a lot more of them.
What about the twenty-minute meters?
Those are in, those, um, are all in the, well, there's one on the square, so that goes with the rates. I mean, it would be, we could do either because we have the programming for both.
There's one in the square, there's one, one.
So we have so very much to cover here.
Yeah, I was just getting ready to say.
We need to move on.
Yeah, let, let's table that. You, you know, you have what we are capable of doing, and that gets us to one ninety-one.
Great.
And we can investigate other options down the road.
Right. Let's move on. I think I'm hearing a general consensus that we should go ahead with the increased rates at whatever rate we can increase them to. All right. Did you have anything else before we dive into four-ten?
Nope.
All right. All right. So four-ten is the police department. The, um, we are, um, I'm sorry, forgive me a second. So we're in Fund One, Department four-ten. Mr. Gable, can you start taking us through?
The, the first, the big thing here is staffing as always. That's always our largest expense. There are, uh, two positions. You see them at the bottom there, new hire one, new hire two, populated with their starting salaries as contractually agreed to. There's a request to add sergeant, I'm sorry, a master sergeant rank, which is envisioned in the collective bargaining agreement, but has never been filled, uh, nor tested to fill. That's a civil service requirement, uh, so there would have to be, um, a civil service exam to promote someone to the rank of master sergeant if they so choose.
So I'm sorry, you're talking about adding a third sergeant?
That is the request.
Okay. Let's start with that. I'd like to hear people's opinions on adding a third sergeant. And please bear in mind, we are having trouble filling patrol positions. So if we were to promote, test and promote from within, we would have three patrol positions unfilled. I, anybody have a strong feeling there? I don't feel like that's really tenable right now.
Can we ask the chief his rationale for it?
Sure.
So my rationale for the supervisors has been the same for, as you can recall, every year I ask you for additional supervisors because our biggest area of liability in law enforcement is favor to train, which we are vastly improving, favor to supervise, and favor to discipline. Without the proper number of supervisor to staff ratio, it's harder to supervise. It creates more liability. Promote, promoting another sergeant would decrease that liability theoretically. Also, when we come to the, our multiple, multiple special events, there's so many areas of command. Now, I am, I am very well aware of what Mr. Moon is saying. And the envisionment of promoting a third sergeant, moving one of those sergeants to the rank of master sergeant would be once we filled those fourteen positions. So obviously it wouldn't be at the first of the year, so that seven thousand could cut, could be cut.
So I, I'm gonna interrupt for one second, and I don't mean to do that rudely. So the big question here that we're gonna have to sink our teeth into is whether we're going to continue to fund both of the new hire positions for this year or whether we're going to push one to the following year. I don't know exactly where we're at in the civil service process trying to hire these two positions. But, uh, do you feel it's likely we are going to be ready to move forward with two certified hires on January first?
I do not. I will say that I think it's imperative we stick to fourteen. You know what? My job above all else is to keep this community safe.
Yep.
And I have done what I do, the lion's share of my adult life. And when I sit down and look at these numbers, I've given you all, um, their organizational charts if you look at them. Uh, the first one, organizational chart A, shows you the situation we're in right now with, with police officers. And as you see with, we are two officers down and a, a light duty spot. So if you look detectives, there's only one detective in there, and I will get to why that's, that is not a good thing. And then if you look at the squad A, you'll see there's only three officers assigned to squad A, which means, uh, right now we have one daylight position lacking in squad A, which is generally covered by a sergeant. During the week, he'll bump down to that, or we'll try to get part-time in, or we have to fill that. If somebody takes off, we have to fill with, with overtime. So that is our current situation as we stand with being two officers down and forced to put one officer on light duty. The chart B shows you, um, organizational chart B shows you us with fourteen sworn. You'll see that with the light duty position in there, you'll see that that detective position is, is refilled after we get people trained. And the officer is placed back in that squad A rotation, which means that we have a full, a full complement on that one. And then the final one, C, is the envisionment with the master sergeant. And that master sergeant position or that additional sergeant position cannot occur until we don't have that light duty position. So I'm, I'm aware of that. I'm aware of the downfalls we have with that. We do need additional supervision. I mean, I can go through here. Mr. Moon, the answer to your question is, I don't know if January one we'll be ready to go with two additional officers. Uh, I do know we need to be ready to go with two additional officers. If we can't be ready to go with two additional officers, then we need to redo a civil service process, advertise and get it going again, no matter how long that takes. So if that is reducing some salary because we can't hire at January one, then, then so be it. But we need to be at fourteen. You know, I, again, I will, I can go down through, um, you know, the national mid-Atlantic average is three point one. I just found a, a study today that was very recent, twenty-four, that says Pennsylvania's three point five nine officers per thousand. We're not close to that.
Where did that figure come from, Chief? Where was that figure from, Chief?
That figure is in. The three point one per thousand is the, uh, two thousand nineteen UCR census figures. The three point five nine for Pennsylvania comes from a study done in September ninth of this year by the safehomes.org organization. Which I have that here if, if folks want to see, and that is three point nine per thousand in Pennsylvania, per thousand residents per community. They also have, uh, some salary stuff in there and some other things, and then there's their methodology, methodologies explained out. But that's where that number came from. I did not do those numbers. I did the three point one. The state average per re- per resident just for Pennsylvania is two point six. We're not there. That would be if you consider our population eighty-one oh, or seventy-one oh one, which was the last census. That would give us eighteen officers. If you consider our population at what the Neil, this is the latest population study I could find, but Nielsberg Research, uh, Gettysburg Population by Year, dated August first, twenty twenty-four, has our population for twenty twenty-three, was the last year that they, they pulled out in this study, of eight thousand four hundred and sixty-eight people. So I, those numbers, that'd be twenty-one officers. If you want to add in our visitors, there's, there's no real methodology for adding in visitors. I kind of created one. I took the average number of visitors, which I've heard anywhere from seven hundred fifty thousand visitors a year to two point two million visitors a year. So I kind of said, okay, let's use a million visitors. Makes it easy. So I buy, divided a million visitors by three hundred and sixty-five days to give us the number of visitors per day. Is it accurate? Absolutely not. But it gives me something to work with. If you factor in visitors and you do the Pennsylvania state average for how many police officers we should have, that's twenty-five officers. We're not gonna get there.
Yeah. What, I'll tell you, one of my ongoing frustrations living here is that it depends on the day of the week and who you ask, what our population numbers are. I, I have seen in the last four months, I've seen five different government studies. The, uh, the twenty twenty U S government census put us at five fifty-one oh four. And I've seen other studies that put us at twelve thousand. Some of them may count the transient student population, some of them may not. It is frustrating in that we don't have a mechanism for conducting our own census to try to come up with what that actual number is. It's, um.
The census website for twenty twenty has us at seventy-one oh one.
Some of them do, yes. There are other sites that do not.
Yeah, the, the official U S government census website has us at seventy-one oh one. So I, I mean, I can go on.
Those numbers aside, um.
Uh, you know, I can, I can break that down to more county figures. We handle a hundred calls per month per officer more than any other department in the county.
I understand that.
So I have a list here, and this is a, a partial list of what we currently can't do or it adds to workload without overtime. So that, that's our biggest thing. I'm, with, one of the biggest things that's called for, you know, that, that I hear all the time. And it, it, it's, it's within my roots because I've, I've not talked about it a while because I've lost it in regulation and rule and law. But I am a gigantic proponent of the principles of Sir Robert Peel and community-oriented policing. And frankly, we just don't do it. We don't have time with our staffing. And in those things, you get community relations and crime prevention events. National night out, presence and participation at community events. Shop with a cop, which I'm trying to bring back this year, which I'm not gonna be able to do without overtime because I, you know, I don't have the staffing, or if I can get somebody to volunteer for it. You know, we don't do special traffic enforcement because we don't have time. We don't do child pedestrian safety checks because we don't have time with it, or child safety seat checks because we don't have time without overtime. You know, we don't do truck enforcement, which is greatly called for. We're always getting complaints about the jake brakes and things like that. And people are, are talking about overweight trucks. And people are talking about overweight trucks and shaking their, you know, their houses. We don't do that. We can't do dedicated foot patrol on busier or special days without, without, you know, putting extra people in an overtime. We can't participate in student events at the college or local schools without bringing somebody else in on overtime. I mean, it, it, it just goes on and on. Training. We can't do training without overtime. We can't adjust to fill shifts. And one of the biggest things that, that is, that hurts us here is our reduction in patrol because we don't have the staff to staff that second detective position is, it reduces our patrol function. And flying that flag, people being, being visible out there. We're supposed to be a deterrent to crime and disorder. We're not supposed to be an occupying force. And the smaller we get, that's what ends up being because we get so reactionary. We can't be, it's, it's, it's kind of frustrating. Our patrol is significantly reduced. We're down to detective spot. Officers, officers have to do their follow-ups, and they can't handle their follow-ups, handle calls, do traffic enforcement, provide effective visual patrol, so we lose our visibility. You know, reduction in staffing forces us to be much more reactionary than proactive. Patrol visibility helps reduce both the fear and incidence of crime. And, and, you know, that's the thing. People feel safer if they see the police most of the time. A reduction in patrol, you know, again, reduces both the actual and perceived community safety, and they're both equally as important. You, you have to think you're safe. It's a quality of life issue. And then we also have to be able to say that you are safe. And my biggest thing, and I'm sorry if I seem really passionate about this, but I do, is, is to maintain this community and to maintain our visitors. And, and Charles always says, and I agree with him, we are a full-service municipality. We're, we're like a city. And to do that and keep people feeling safe, I need staff to keep people out there because if people don't feel safe, they're not going to come here. And if you look at Destination Gettysburg and some of the stuff that they bring back, they talk about one of the, one of the biggest factors, people's how safe they feel when they come here. You know, if we, if, if, if crime starts going up because we don't have staff.
That's a hypothetical, and that's, that's also a bit of an aggression as well. You know, your predecessor kept the borough humming along with eight officers. You have considerably more than that now. We've been trying for a year now to fill these two positions, and we're not having good luck with it. And I'm not saying that's for anybody's fault or for lack of trying. God knows, we've all been trying. But the likelihood that we're going to fill them on January 1st is extraordinarily low, if not zero. If we fill the empty detective slot, that's another officer we have to try to find. If we fill a third sergeant slot, that's another patrol officer we need to find. So that takes us up to four patrol officer positions to fill. I understand everything you're saying. I think every one of us does. But I don't see how we can possibly create another command position and take away a patrol officer when you're telling us so impassionately.
Well, I disagree with your thinking about what the sergeants do. The sergeants are patrol officers with supervisory abilities.
All right.
And I said, and I mean it, if you look at C, we don't, we can't do that until we're full with 14. I understand that, but it's something that I need to bring out. It's my job.
But the second we're full at 14, and you fill the sergeant position and you fill the detective position, we're back to being down two.
No, we're not. If you look at it, if we get to 14, we can't fill the, the extra sergeant position until we don't have a light duty position. So until that's resolved, that, that position is not going, that's not going to be filled. But at 14, that fills the light duty position, it fills the detective position, and it fills the patrol shortage that we are on squad A.
I don't, I don't see it. All right, counsel, please weigh in with your opinions here.
Well, I agree with the chief in terms of when you say, well, having less cops, we kind of see how that played out on a national level. And I can't believe we're still debating that. Some people can't deal with the facts. Matt, you brought up eight. I'm looking at the nine-year staffing and the least we ever had in that nine years was 11. And I think we had chiefs that always were asking for more, and we were able to do it. I said last meeting, if we, to reduce it, it's not, not just morale, which I think they would see that as a, something bad. And, but I also think public safety, it is a hypothetical, but I think it is a deterrent. And, and, and people, our guys out on the street, people see that, people feel safe. We do have a safe community. And I just, I will not support reducing any positions. Because interestingly, you know, there was, talking to people in the community, they thought that these were additional positions because I think that was in a presentation instead of unfilled positions because of different circumstances. But they're unfilled.
That is correct.
That was the case years ago when the comment about the, the eight officers. So the graph on the screen is in each of those budget years. That was the authorized budgeted amounts of staffing levels. Not all of those were filled positions, but that's what was authorized and the budgeted in those years.
Just so I understand what we're deciding here. From last week, it sounded like we were going to go where the option was. Since we know, or if we know that one of those positions won't be filled till the middle of the year, we don't fund half the position. One of them, so we're like funded 13.5 rather than the 14. And then the next budget season, we go, once they're here, then we go back to the 14 funded. That's what, or am I missing?
That is exactly what we discussed last week, yes.
And is that what we're?
So there's two questions ahead of us right here, right now. So one is, do we create a third sergeant position? Which we did not discuss last week. And then the other question is, and this is the one we have to get to if we're going to figure out this budget deficit. This is, this is the whole nut that we're looking at here with this millage increase, is that we have, we created two positions that we have not been able to fill. And we did it because we had ARPA money. We were fat and happy. And now that that is running out, we have to figure out how to pay for those jobs. So what we discussed last week was, yes, reallocating half of those funds to create this, to help create the new DPW position, which I think most of us felt is pretty sorely needed. We are hopeful we will hire a full-time certified position on January 1st, but that is unlikely. But that is still what we're working towards with the civil service process. The idea that we would have two certified people ready to go on January 1st is almost zero. So if we are then repeating the civil service process in the spring with the intent of sending somebody to the academy, the earliest we would see them for field training is the end of next summer.
If you're repeating, so if we don't hire somebody by January 5th, that's not certified. If we have to send somebody to the academy and we don't have them on board, might as well say January 1st. If we don't have them on board January 2nd to send them to an academy January 5th, then if we hire somebody uncertified that we have to send to the academy, the earliest they will be able to go to an academy is the first part of July, which means that we will start paying them then. The earliest we will get them is the first part of December where they can start field training, which means that the earliest that they will be available, not budget-wise, but we, I mean, we'd have to pay them from July on. But we don't pay them at full police officer salary. It's a reduced salary. I want to say it's 85%, Charles, 80 or 85%.
That sounds right. That sounds right.
The, the academy salary is for the lion's share of this year. If we are able to get a list through this last civil service process, which frankly doesn't look promising at this juncture, then we are not going to, unless we rehire with, or unless we retest removing the, we will allow uncertified people to test portion and require them to be certified, we're not going to get anybody on staff until July. We do have one certified person who is eligible right now. And to my knowledge, is the only one that passed a physical agility test the first time. Available to hire.
Okay.
That, that has to go through the interview process yet. But that particular person would be a fairly quick hire because the background is done. We just did a, we just actually did a psychological and physical within the last three months on him.
Right. So I just want to be really clear. I'm not proposing cutting the 14th position. I'm just saying it's unlikely that we'll fill it in the next calendar year. So moving those funds where we sorely need them elsewhere for the year would be prudent with the intent of continuing the hiring process into 2026. So the two questions we need to resolve right now are, one, do we want to add a third command sergeant? And that's a new question we had not discussed previously. And then the second question is, how do we want to address these two unfilled officer positions? Either we fully fund them and hope to fill them, or we keep one and reallocate the second funds to pay for other priorities that we know we, we want to fulfill too, like this new DPW person.
Can I make, can I make your first question really easy and say, I withdraw the request to put a third sergeant on right now because we, we're not going to get people through training?
Okay, that's fair. That's fair.
So I withdraw that right now.
Okay.
To, to add additional supervisors, even though I believe we sorely need them.
I know you do.
I, I will withdraw that because I understand that, that issue.
Yeah.
And from a bean counter perspective, because it's the hat I'm wearing today, to make your budgetary decisions a little simpler, it's obvious that we're talking about, we're not going to have that, we're not going to have two by January 1. So counsel will have the ability to be nimble mid-year if we are lucky enough to identify that second individual, and you can do a, a special budget appropriation using reserve funds at that point.
Yeah.
Would you, would you feel comfortable with that?
If, I will feel comfortable with counsel telling me that my sworn complement is 14. And if I can get those filled, then, then we're going to keep them, and we're going to continue to try to keep them filled. That, that, that makes me comfortable because I, I understand what Mr. Moon is saying. We're going to have, we're having a hard time filling them now. I mean, we got lucky last time, and then we were unlucky because one of them didn't work out, decided to leave. So we haven't been at the full 14 to show, you know, I, yes, I'm, I'm happy. If, if we keep the number at 14 and, and we say we're going to do our best to hire them, then yes.
Have we looked at, this is helpful, this chart, to see the number of, you know, the personnel from 2016 to current. Have we also done, looked at crime stats over that same period of time to see where we are with crime stats? And would that, I want to just ask my council members whether that would be helpful?
I think any data would be helpful for sure. I was just looking at the graph, and it would look like it, we were at, we were budgeted to have 2014, 2014. We were budgeted to have 14 in 2023 and 2024. Did we have 14 in 2023? Or did we just budget to have 14?
For like 20 seconds.
That was 24.
No, that was 24.
Hold on, 23, no, we did not. No.
We, we had, we had 14 briefly at the end of 2023 because we had hired them to go to the academy.
Right.
And they started in January. So, no, we didn't. I'm wrong. We didn't. We only budgeted for, in 23, it wasn't, it wasn't a full year that was budgeted for 14. It was a partial year that was budgeted for 14.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
And again, with ARPA funds, which eventually are going to be gone, and we will have these salaries. So we will be raising taxes if this is what the community wants.
Right.
I'm sorry to say it. I will be that voice, that unpopular voice. I'm fine with that. The taxes will be raised.
Okay. So the question before the counsel right now is, do you want to fund both positions, 13 and 14, in full? And then also, or maybe not also, do a DPW position? Or do you want to fund one of them in full and the other at half, assuming that we're going to have to send somebody to the academy? Those are funds we could then allocate towards a DPW position. Let's just go down the line. We really need to get this done so we can tackle hundreds of pages of budget here. Chad?
I'm in favor of the DPW position. I am not seeing a history with the police department of, of being able to fill successfully 14 positions. We need more positions, we need more team on DPW. I will go for one more, for keeping one of the 14, one, one for the police department. And then let's figure out allocate, reallocating the other one for, to help with a DPW position. And then we'll figure it out when we come to that bridge later down the way of, oh, look, what luck. We found someone. Great. Let's reallocate and, and figure out what Mr. Gable said about a, a special budget.
Alicia?
Yeah, I agree with Chad, and some of you had already mentioned this, that funding the DPW position is, is crucial, in my opinion. And of course, it is, I feel it's crucial also to have officers on staff. I'm certainly not saying that. If we could certainly get somebody in here by January, that would be great, but it doesn't look promising. But with the opportunity to perhaps fill a position midway and having that door open, I, I like that idea. So option two.
I'm committed to keeping the 14. I feel with Chief's concession, saying he's comfortable because we're not going to get somebody until at least July to use that money for DPW. But if something does happen, we can always revisit that in the middle of the year, as Manager Gable said. So for this year, I'd be okay with that. Option two.
I agree. We're we're funding with uncertainties galore. And what has been said about in the future, we may have to adjust. That's the reality. But for now, we'll do what's best, and I'm, support the 14.
With or without the reallocation of funds for the DPW position?
Anyway.
Okay.
I agree with confirming the 14 and reallocating the funds as we need to and continuing to move forward with the hiring processes.
I, as I said last week, I would agree with funding the one position and reallocating the other to Public Works. And then we'll, we'll take it by, you know, we'll, we'll play it by here and see where we are because I'm not optimistic that we're going to fill those, that, that position, so.
Right. And, you know, there's, there's all sorts of realities we struggle with here, you know. We have, you know, folks who may decide to retire in the next year. So that might keep us from hitting that 14. We have people who could get injured, and that might keep us from hitting that 14. It's, it's a goal to keep reaching for, but we just, we just haven't hit it yet. And now we're trying to figure out how to pay for it. I'm hesitant to... I'm going to move on. All right. I think what I'm hearing here is that we will fully fund one of those positions, half fund the second, reallocate those funds as necessary to a DPW position with the understanding that we'll probably be sending somebody to the academy, hopefully in January, but it may be July. And if we have to do an adjustment of that funding, we will. Okay. All right. So let's return to 410, please.
So these next several line items are all related to part-time, other full-time pay categories, like, you know, overtime or not overtime, vacation time, personal time, sick time.
I'm sorry, are you on, nobody can see the screen. Are you on 410, 116?
Yeah.
Okay. So 410, 116 is full-time officer expenses. 410, 17 is auxiliary polices. Those are separate from part-timers. The auxiliaries do things like traffic control and special events. They help out the department, so that's separate from the part-time expense.
That's correct. Yeah, the, these are fairly low position, budgeted positions.
Yeah.
They support events and things of that sort. The next big category there is contracted services, 135. And Chief can explain what's needed there for Lexi Poll and background investigations and such.
Okay. Lexi Poll, our policy service, like everything else post-pandemic, has, has increased their price. So they're up to, and it's 860623 was their quote for 25. So they're up to, and it's 860623 was their quote for 25. The background investigation for new hires is, I, I put in there for three. They're about $3,000 apiece. So that's $9,000. And then I have a contracted out internal investigation if we need it for 4,000. Hopefully we don't for the total in that category would be 2160623. I mean, we can, if we're looking at, yeah, when we do possibly two backgrounds, we could probably nix another three grand out of that category. And we're doing, if we, if we're lucky enough to find somebody who wants to be a part-time officer, we do those internally anyway, so they're not as expensive.
Okay. Any questions on that? All right. 410-170 is part-time police. Overtime for part-time policemen, police, I'm sorry, police. 410-172 is holiday pay. That's contractually obligated. Personal leave is 173. That's contractually obligated. 174, 175 are contractually obligated. And then we get into some of the overtime categories. The chief has been extremely patient with us over the last several years in breaking out exactly how overtime is spent so that we can understand it better. There was a period of time just a few years ago where overtime really fell into two buckets. It was overtime regular and overtime reimbursed. And we just, we had no concept of what those were. So this next several sections is going to kind of show us how there are different categories of overtime. Some are reimbursed, some are not. So 176 is overtime regular. 177 is overtime shift change. 178 is court appearances. You know, if you are an officer who works at night and you have to go to court during the day, that's overtime, right? If you're working 40 hours and you have to go to court on your day off, that's overtime. Holiday worked, that's going to be contractually obligated. 180, holiday overtime. Holiday worked is different from holiday overtime. Our contract with the police does offer some compensation to officers, even if they're not working on a holiday, but then extra overtime if they are working on that holiday. Overtime special events, this is going to be for our parades and such. A lot of this is reimbursed through our permitting process. Overtime emergency, you know, that's pretty straightforward. Overtime contracts, I'm not sure what that one is.
That is, by contract, the officers work 80 and a half hours per pay period. So every pay period, every, every officer, that, every patrol officer and patrol supervisor gets a half hour overtime. By the way, the schedule is, is set up and by the way, that, that's contractually obligated. So it, there's a half hour overtime built into every pay period for, per officer.
Does the evening differential fall into that category as well?
No, the contract is written that regardless of whether it's an overtime, they just get a flat extra, I think it's 60 cents, 65 cents per hour.
Unless it changes 30 cents an hour.
What's that?
Unless, I don't know if it went up over the years. Last year it was 30 cents.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm thinking of another contract.
Yeah.
I think it's 35 for this contract.
Yeah, Charles, you're right.
All right. 184 is overtime drug task force. That is compensated, or I'm sorry, reimbursed. 185 is overtime traffic grant. Those are reimbursed dollars. The chief is extremely good at going out and finding those dollars that other departments are not taking advantage of.
And, and just real quick, on, on those two categories, drug task force and traffic grant, and it's one of the reasons I put that in the last report to show you. All that money that I talked about in the last monthly report that we spent for that 104 hours of, of, of traffic grant, that was all money we weren't supposed to have in traffic grant. Barb Zortman down at Traffic Safety gave it to us because we performed well for them. So that grant number, that, that's an estimate. That's, that's what she's supposed to give us, what you see in there. So as we go along next year, if you see that's, that's out of kilter, that's why that's out of kilter. There, there's a corresponding revenue.
We may have gotten additional funds.
Yes, we may have got additional funds. So I just, and, and the drug task force is the same way. We, we had a lot more drug activity this year than we have in years past. Enforcement activity to the task force, so that number went up. And again, when you see that number, if it looks like it's over budget, there's a corresponding revenue somewhere for that as well. And I can dig through here and give you the exact account numbers where that goes in. But if there is a corresponding revenue, I just wanted to make sure.
We'll hit those when we go through revenue. Yep, thank you. 186 is sick time buyback. We have nothing budgeted there for the year. 187 is vacation buyback. Those are contractually obligated expenses. 188 is healthcare buyout. Again, there's a lot of flexibility built into these contracts with the collective bargaining agreements. And then we get into 189, vision insurance. 191, uniform allowance, which is, yes, contractually obligated. 192, FICO. 193, Medicare. And you're going to see this, these categories are going to repeat as we go through other departments as well. So this is just the police department. 194, unemployment compensation insurance. 195, HRA. 196, health insurance.
When you look at this category, you'll see the employee contribution offsets the increased premiums that we talked about, the 19.9% increase in health insurance.
197, pension contributions. All this is contractually obligated. 198, ADD life, short-term disability. 199, dental insurance, 200 pension non-uniform. And then we get into, with 210, we start getting into out-of-payroll expenses and we start getting into controllable things. And again, I said this last week, we are not a borough that compels its staff to count their paperclips and bring pens from home. We want to make sure everybody is fully equipped with the things they need to do their jobs. So 210 is operating supplies and that, that's sort of a miscellaneous category. It can be lots of stuff. 215 is postage. 220 miscellaneous expenses. 231 is fuel and that's going to be fuel that they buy from our depot at DPW. That's a greatly reduced rate over market rate for fuel. 242, protection to persons and property. That's going to be things having to do with ammunition and active shooter gear, personal protective things. Is that where vests go in?
Yes, it's, it's, they're kind of split up between that and uniform allowance. The whole uniform allowance is not, actually the reimbursement is not out of the contract.
Right. And some of those things are consumable, right? Vests have to be replaced periodically. Yep. 249 is TASER maintenance. 251, vehicle expenses, parts and maintenance. We do have a fleet contract that oversees much of the maintenance of our vehicles, but there are sometimes extraneous expenses that don't fall into that contract. 252, computer video copy, computer copier video parts. 260, small tools. 301, towing costs. That's something that probably has a revenue offset, sort of. 310, professional services. What would fall into there? Professional slash other. It's 5,995.
I'm sorry, what, I'm?
410-310? Professional slash other services.
Sorry, I'm trying to multitask.
Of course.
410-310. Professional services as needed. I don't have a description of that. So things like, in other departments, 409, things like Michael Baker International, things that we contract out could be considered professional services.
So this might be like background checks when we're not doing them internally? Could that?
No, they're up in, uh,
Yeah, I saw those up.
Stuff comes up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's, there's things that, that we can't do. So.
Sure.
Perhaps a, you know, a consultation or, or how to download a cell phone for an investigation or special investigative services.
Yep.
Those types of things are going to be things that we don't use a lot, so we have to, to go outside and get.
So it'd be like additional training for officers, kind of, for?
The training is usually covered under the training budget.
Okay.
It wouldn't necessarily be training. It would be going to a, there are specialty places out there that will do electronic evidence stuff, like the state police lab or the federal lab. So you contract that to them so that they'll, they'll extract the phone and the contents of a phone and, and, and make sure that it's forensically documented, or a forensic audit would be a good example.
So it seems like this is probably just a catch-all budget line for, hey, we had to go find a vendor for this one-off thing and it doesn't fit into any other category, but we need to pay for it. Okay.
If you look at the history of this line item, going back to 2017, in 2017, $6,100 was expended in this category. 2018, 5250. 2019, 5890.
Okay.
2020, 2800. So it, it bounces around, but it is used.
Great. Okay. 314, special legal services. That can be consultations with our labor attorneys. I'm sure all sorts of things could fall into there. All right. Next page, 321 is our telephone expenses. Those are all VoIP phones. Each desk has its own line, plus there are other specialty lines throughout the building as well. Wireless phones. Everybody carries a wireless phone that we pay for as well. That's 324. 325, internet fees. 327, radio equipment and maintenance. 329, computer software fees. There are a number of platforms in there that our department has to work with that do a number of different things. You'll see some in there like Ecode 360. You'll also see that allocated in other departments as well. That's probably one larger bill that is kind of split up between the departments as necessary. 331, travel reimbursement. That's going to be for training, for recruitment, for conferences. 350, insurance for vehicles. 351, insurance, PA law 477. Can you tell us what that is, Chief?
I do not know what that insurance is.
Okay. Required by law.
Right.
What's the name of, what's the name of it? What line item are we talking about again?
351.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's required by law.
352, general liability. 354, workers' comp. 357, inland marine, they are one of our insurers for vehicles. Is that right? What was that?
I, I don't remember the.
From last year, we had a discussion about this. This is things outside of vehicles that need insured.
Yes.
So, you know, there's, there's, there's other items of equipment that are of a value that they should have insurance on them that, that, that don't go through our vehicle insurance. So that's what's in that, that inland marine. It kind of sounds weird with inland marine, but that's what it is.
We don't have a boat.
No, we don't have a boat.
I'm going to ask every year. 358, insurance, law enforcement liability. 359, insurance comm umbrella. I don't know what that is. 374, machinery and equipment repair. That's not budgeted. 384, rent of machinery and equipment. 410-410, judgment and damages. It's not budgeted because we can't budget that. We don't know what's going to happen. 410-420, dues, subscriptions and memberships. Now, that's a lot of organizations that the police department works with for different purposes. 452, contracted IT services. So this is part of our overall package with TRISTA, but it's split out desk by desk throughout the building, department by department. So you'll see this on other departments as well. That continues on to the next page. 460, continuing education and training. This is a big number, but this is a, one of those areas where we really, you know, never stop learning and law enforcement is an evolving and dynamic practice. And so, again, the chief is excellent at identifying training opportunities for his officers.
If I may just speak up just real quick about that one. We do much more training than that, that figure, that $20,000 figure, thanks to our friends at Wellspan. We, we, we pay for a lot of training from funding that, that Wellspan gives us yearly and reimburses us for, to include overtime to send people to training and backfilling that shift. So I'm really appreciative of Wellspan and that's why I bring it up now.
Absolutely. 461, community police training. What's?
That's the Wellspan.
Okay. 740, capital purchase machinery. So you can see there's a lot of vehicle expenses in there. 750, capital purchase minor machines. That's going to be, it looks like a lot of hardware for weaponry and tactical tablet computers. And that brings us to the end. And as you can see, we have a total expenditure for the department of $2.64 million for 2025. And I'd like to just kind of underscore that for a minute. So that has, in the five years that I have been here, that number has gone up over a million dollars. And some of that is new personnel, but a lot of that is just the cost of doing business. And I just want to really underscore for people that public safety is an expensive endeavor for a borough. And it is by far our largest expense. It's a worthwhile expense, but this is why we spend time talking about it. Because it's a lot of money and we need to be thorough and we need to be responsible there.
So if I may add very quickly, the reason I was not paying attention is I was adjusting everything based on your directives for staffing. So the expenditures for the department decreased to 2.5 million based on partially funding those two positions. It's still an increase from 2024 budgeted levels of 2.4.
Great. Thank you. I just really want to underscore for everybody at home, when we're talking about Department 410, we're talking about 40% of all borough expenditures. So I, these, I know these conversations get heated, but not for no reason. It's not because anybody's trying to defund anything or whatever. It's just that we have a responsibility to the taxpayers to take a hard look at all departments, but that large one especially. Let's move on to Department 411, please. We're going to get into a bunch of things here that are single-page. So this is general fund expenditures for fire.
Yeah, we, what, the, the secretary at the fire department is run through the borough's payroll. So these are essentially reimbursed line items.
So we just sort of handle the, the processing for them because since?
They don't run their own payroll. They have one employee.
Right. They have a, all, mostly a volunteer staff. So that's a valuable service we offer them. Far 13.
Code enforcement. John, do you want to talk about any of your needs there, other than obviously telephone and software and things?
Well, as a department, most of the code enforcement provisions, we're dealing with PMCA for our UCC code reviews. We have on, are on staff member doing code enforcement review for our property maintenance code and then other general provisions related to activities that the borough licenses and permits. The, I'm trying to see if, most of these are. With this specific fund, we don't, we're not necessarily requiring or requesting anything extreme.
Is it mostly just operating expenses in and around the activities of code enforcement? So we've got contracted services, postage, computer and video stuff, legal services. That's consultation with the solicitor. That's not budgeted. Telephones, internet fees. Again, it's a Telephones, internet fees. Again, it's a lot of the stuff that's going to, we're going to see split out amongst lots and lots of departments.
The salary line items for this are in the next department, 414.
Great. Let's go to 414. General fund expenditures. So this is where we're going to start seeing some of the salaries for professional staff here in the borough. So 110, we have our planning director. 112, we have code enforcement, as well as another position that does a little bit of everything for us. 113 is an intern. Do we have one currently? We do? Great, cool. 114, professional staff, this is the portion of the historic preservation office that is not paid by the stormwater authority. This is our contribution to that salary. 135, contracted services, unbudgeted. And then we're going to get, start getting into just regular payroll expenses here for a few pages. So we've got holiday pay, personal pay, sick leave, vacation, more vacation, healthcare buyouts, vision insurance, FICA, Medicare, unemployment. That just keeps going on until we get to page four, we start getting into operating expenses. This is going to look a lot like the end of the police department. You know, postage, paper, paper clips, legal services. There's a few extra lines here for legal stuff. 317 is legal expenses for the zoning hearing board. They have their own solicitor, as they are a quasi-judicial body, so there are legal expenses there. There can also be stenography expenses associated with zoning. Legal ordinance amendment reviews. The next page, we start getting back into more mechanical stuff, telephones, internets, computer, travel reimbursement, workers' comp, dues, subscriptions, IT services, continuing ed, capital stuff. Any questions on that section from anybody? Okay. 415, emergency management. Charles, could you talk a little bit about these expenses?
Yeah, the emergency management coordinator for the borough gets a $750 stipend. The others are, the other expenses here are related to civil service fees.
Great. Any questions about that? Great.
421 is trap, new to release essentially, and any initiatives we do to promote recycling, very small department.
All right, 430. We get into public works. Again, this is going to be much like the other departments. We've got personnel on the first page, including our director, followed by full-time staff. And then if you look in 112, item H, you can see that we have the new position there, and that its salary is going to be split 75% between public works budget and 25% amongst parking's budget. And that's because that position will help oversee primarily maintenance in and around the parking garage, as well as other projects throughout the borough as needed. And then we have our second-in-command there on 114, and then we start getting into part-time pay rates, differential pays. What are the differential pays for, for this department?
There's two, based on the hours of day that you work. So essentially, first, second, and third shift. You work at par during first. You have a modest increase for evening work, and if you're in the wee hours of the morning, you get preferred rate.
Great. 117 is that second differential. 135 is contracted services. 172, holiday, personal leave, sick leave, vacation, overtime, regular. Overtime, holiday worked, holiday overtime. Again, a lot, this is, these workers are also covered by a collective bargaining agreement, so a lot of this is going to be contractually obligated. Special events, they do help out with all of our parades as well, and sometimes those hours are extra. Although I will say, I like to point this out every year, Mr. Harbaugh is excellent at finding little spots throughout the day where, we've got 10 minutes, go move one block, and then get back to work. 179, holiday worked. 180, holiday overtime, special event, I missed the same page. Vacation buyback, healthcare, vision insurance, FICA, Medicare, unemployment, HRA, health insurance, pension, ADD, and life, and short-term disability, dental insurance, operating expenses. It does look like we're buying a couple tablets this year, which I'm sure will come in handy for a variety of things. Looks like they'll be used for a timesheet entry, for identifying service needs. Seems like a reasonable expense. Tools, engineering and architectural work, telephones, telephones, internet fees, computer and software fees. Again, you see things like Ecode 360 have been split out amongst different departments. Same with Azure Cloud backups. Legal advertising, that's going to be relatively small for this department. Insurances. Go well into the next page, utilities. These are separate utilities we pay for the DPW facilities that are apart from this building. We do pay our own stormwater fees for that building down there on Middle Street. Machinery and equipment repairs. Looks like we've got some stuff budgeted there for this year. Rent of machinery is needed. We do borrow and rent equipment throughout the year for different tasks. Dues and memberships, that's relatively small. Snow removal costs, zero, because we're probably not ever going to have snow again, so don't worry about that.
It's in another department.
Permits and fees, contracted IT services, continued education and training. Capital purchase machinery, 740, this is where we see some of our vehicle expenses. Some of these, we have some vehicles we own and some that are part of the enterprise fleet. For a total expenditure for the department of $1.1 million. Anybody have any questions or concerns about Fund 430? All right. 434, street lighting. It's pretty straightforward, and this is what it costs us to keep the streetlights on. We, you know, this number goes up a little bit every year because energy costs go up, but then we also sometimes see it go down because we're relamping with LEDs. Several years ago, we did a major relamping and had a huge savings of something like $30,000 a year. 435, sidewalks and crosswalks.
So this is primarily engineering for the other fund, CDBG. We cannot use CDBG funds for engineering, so that's budgeted in the general fund.
Great. Any questions on that? All right. 439, general fund expenditures, roads and alleys.
I, I'm not offering this, but if you're looking to cut something, this is an eligible item. How much alley work do you want to get done in 2025?
How much do we have on the books?
Robbie, we did about $50,000 this year, is that right?
Do you have alleys that you feel are direly in need of work?
A few that we could probably, we could probably drop that down to half, $25,000.
So do you just keep like a running list of roads that need addressed, and it's sort of prioritized?
We normally pick like two to three alleys a year to do at that $50,000. And that, like I said, we keep the cost down by doing it through agility, too. If we had to contract that out, it'd be a whole lot more.
All right, well, I would recommend we keep it here. We do have a responsibility to pave our roads when they need it. But I'll tell you what, if we get to the end of this process and we're like $23,000 short, we might revisit it.
All right, for now it stays.
445 is parking facilities. So this is again where we start to see some payroll expenses for our full-time and part-time staff. Most of our full-timers are union members, so they're going to be covered under those same collective bargaining agreements, so a lot of this will be contractually obligated. And then we do have some part-timers as well. Is that on 115D, I see new part-time employee, is that a new position we'd be creating? Or is that just an unfilled position that we need to fill?
So, right now, the names in here are placeholders. The question is, how much do you want to, in the aggregate? It doesn't, I mean, this isn't, the salaries in here are based on what historically they've been paid. But it doesn't prohibit hiring additional personnel, as long as we don't go over the aggregate number.
Got it. Are we, are we short-staffed right now, Becca? Yeah, okay. Anybody have any reason not to keep that position in? No? Okay. There are differentials based, baked into that contract. And again, you know, the next several pages are just going to be the cost of doing business, so it's going to be all personnel expenses, overtime, and benefits. Until we get to page six, we get to line 210, so we start to see a lot of the stuff we saw before. Operating expenses, postage, miscellaneous expenses, gas, parts and maintenance. So then, 313, we have a $10,000 line that is the bi-annual engineering service for the garage. The garage does take, it is an older building, and it's got a certain lifespan to it, so it requires engineering periodically.
So, yeah, in another line item, you'll see $80,000 for construction. So this is the engineering side to that project for next year. And we don't budget this every year, we do it every other. We were having trouble in the past of finding a contractor for a project that's $35,000 or $40,000. So we started doing it biannually to make it more lucrative for a contractor to bid on the work.
Great. Telephones, computers, internets, travel reimbursement, insurances, public utilities, credit card machine fees, the merchant fees, so that's something that we don't see in other departments, right? Becca's department does a lot of payment processing, and so those are our credit card fees for the year. As you can see, it's a substantial number, $51,000.
Isn't that the one that we are cutting?
So my guess is that that is separate from the service fees associated with the app. We still have to process the cards as well. Is that correct, Becca?
Correct. That number may come down just a tad because of that adjustment with the app. If we're putting that to the consumer, but it's not going to change that much, because yes, we do, the permits online and all those fees associated with the online and.
And the kiosks at the garage.
Ticket prices, the kiosk, yeah.
Paying of fines and penalties by credit card.
Is there, can we pass those on as well, as we did with the parking fees?
So that is a question of legality. Some vendors will happily put a fee on top of a transaction and say that is a credit card fee. I've had, I've been approached by people in the past who have been very firm in their affirmation that that is not allowed legally. Credit card fees are largely considered a cost of doing business. We are paying for somebody else's convenience. I don't know that we can legally pass those fees on. Maybe, but I don't know.
I wouldn't even know how to begin to estimate the percentage change there. I don't, would you know how to do that?
420, dues and subscriptions. 452, IT services, continuing ed, machinery. Those are some vehicle expenses for the vehicles we use. LPR camera installation, what does that mean? LPR, license plate reg, oh, the cool thing mounted on the top of your car. That's cool. It is cool. So we have a department here, total expenses are $456,000, and this is a department that generally raises well over a million and a half for us, so that is money well spent. All right. Any questions on that?
Going back to the question, just in terms of the parking meters, again, thinking about the outdated. I just want to just follow up again. There are no other companies out there that have like as a side business, they've adapted to try to adapt these meters at all?
The park, the parking industry has moved on from where we've been before.
Okay.
We literally have 1990 technology that we're still cobbling along with.
So it's not discussion tonight, but it's something we have to definitely address down the road.
We, we have tried to address it, but the community rejected it.
What about like finding a handheld to buy that already had those rates programmed in them?
Doesn't exist. We've asked that question, right?
People are actually calling us, asking for ours.
And we don't rent it out, because we're never going to get it back.
And we can't add rates, so they'd only be able to use our rates that we currently have preloaded on there.
All right.
I mean, since we're still on it, I agree with Ms. Lawson, we definitely need to, I mean, we're just kicking the can down the road on that. We're working with 1990s equipment and software when we should definitely already be in 2025.
It's our biggest revenue.
For the biggest money, outside of property tax, it's our biggest income generator.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just, it's a no-brainer for me. I mean, how, how could we, we can't. We have to figure out something next year. We've got to, and that's going to be a big chunk of money, I'm sure. But in the long run, we really need to be in that, in that, we need to move forward with that, because we can't, there's just no other choice.
I'm going to kindly interrupt here politely, if I can, and say that this is an area that Becca and I have spent a lot of time talking. Charles and I have talked about this a lot, too. Becca has done this research. She has come up with, you know, what it would cost us to address this. If we're going to task her department with doing this again, starting over and doing this research, then somebody on this council needs to step up to volunteer to do this work with her, and to come up with a workable solution that they think we can build into a budget. Somebody has to help her with this. We can't just keep telling her department, go do three months' worth of research, and then, ah, sorry, we're not interested in that.
Well, that's exactly what I'm saying. When I say we have to do something, we, the council, have to do something.
That's exactly what happened the last time.
We can't just have her do all this research, and then I say, oh no, we're not going to do it, it's too expensive. Well, then we're, then what's the other solution? Raise the taxes more?
So what I'm saying is, I want everybody to think on that. If this is a direction we want to go in the coming year or the year after that, then somebody needs to spend some time on this project. So think about it, and if you decide that's something you want to put some work into, let me know, please. 454, parks, recreations, and grounds. This is where we're going to see a lot of expenses for.
This is primarily GARA. We support, with Cumberland Township, our recreation services over at GARA. I'm proposing $79,050, which is a 2%-ish increase from last year's level. And then the others in here are the community support for the larger events that everyone loves and holds dear in the community.
Okay. So we have insurances, we have stormwater. We have stormwater. Can you explain 530?
That's GARA, the rec park.
So that is...
That is our contribution to the operational costs of the rec park.
Individual events.
Oh, that's 550. So yeah, so every year, we've been budgeting a contribution or a sponsorship, if you will, for those community events.
So 530, that was the rent, right?
No, no, no.
What, it's just a general contribution to the park service in general?
Not the park service.
I'm sorry, GARA?
GARA, correct. Yep, for their operational needs.
All right. And then we do, in 550, we do have some funds set aside for the different events that the borough sponsors throughout the year. Item F is a question. New Year's Eve on Lincoln Square.
Yeah, that's not happening this year. Question is, does someone own it for next year?
I see. So we'll set aside some funds in case somebody does pick up that burden and run with that.
And just so the public understands, events aren't free and they need a leader. So everyone's asking, what's going on on New Year's Eve? The person who's done it the last two years generously has done that on their own dime. And they did not get the support from the community to keep it going. And as such, there will not be a New Year's Eve celebration unless someone else steps up and carries the mantle.
That is correct. All right. 455 Shade Tree. These are funds we set aside for our Shade Tree Commission for the planting, maintenance and removal of trees in the public rights away. Any questions there? Okay. 465. Community Development.
Right. This is, you'll see a line item that was added here based on the request of Chris Webb that was spoken about in public comment earlier tonight. You'll also find the borough's support for Main Street for operational needs. Obviously, very close relationship with Main Street. They do a lot of work for us. The Rabbit Transit line item is, it's an odd number. And that's because there's a funding formula by the state for public transit. And this is local municipalities required match to that funding. If it is not met, then it could potentially put in jeopardy the services of Rapid Transit.
All right. So 541, Main Street Gettysburg funds there. I think we all see the value in continuing to fund that endeavor. 543 is money for Rabbit Transit. 545 Arts Council contributions. And then 547 is the request for the Gettysburg Film Commission. Does anybody have a strong feeling for or against adding that? It seems like a pretty reasonable level of support.
I think it's a wonderful addition to our community.
What did you say, Alisha?
I said, I think it's a wonderful, I mean...
I think it's a wonderful addition to our community.
Yes, and a woman was making comments during public comments. I would just like to add, are they in connection with the Pennsylvania Film Commission?
They are.
Yep, just wanted to make sure. That was my question, because that gives tax credits and yeah, isn't located in the Harrisburg thing. Thank you.
Great.
I'm sorry, Matt. Can I have a question back on 455 Shade Tree?
Okay, give me a second. Okay.
455-135 Contracted Services. A little note in here, it says outsourced services contracted when Public Works Department is not able to schedule maintenance work. What maintenance work? I wasn't aware that the Shade Tree Commission was trimming trees. The Public Works does that.
It would be the trimming that we would not be, the taller trees that would have to come down or trimmed that we cannot get high enough with our bucket truck. That would have to be contracted out with a larger bucket truck.
Do we know how much that, how often that's used? A great deal?
Yeah, especially in this time of year for, once the leaves are off, we go, they go, we do a lot of trimming around town.
Okay, thank you.
So everybody was okay. Was anybody opposed to the addition of the Film Commission funding request?
I was trying to find it.
We're on 465, 547.
Thank you.
It's page two of 465.
I think it's fine.
Okay. Everybody else cool? All right. 465.
This is essentially debt service, transfers to CDBG. CDBG is a reimbursement grant. So we forward that money over to the CDBG as we expend those, as we do sidewalk work. Then those monies get paid back to the general fund. So when we get into revenues, you'll see the offsetting $129,000 in revenues as an expense here. The rest is debt service.
The rest is debt service. So in 230, we have interest on the PIB loan, principal payments on the PIB loan, interest on the GO bond from 2016 and principal payments. So this is that big debt service number we are looking at in the summary. All right, that takes us to the end of Fund One. What do we want to do next for someone expenses?
The headline there, and I may have missed a line item because I literally was working in the budget software as we were talking, while you were talking, I was half-listening while I was working in the budget software. Based on your decisions tonight, your deficit is now down to roughly $553,000.
Great. That's great.
So do you want to deal with the revenue side of Fund One? Or you want to move on to another fund and expenses?
Let's deal with the revenue side.
Okay.
Start at the beginning. 301.
All right. So there are no proposed increases in taxes in this just yet. This is the expected revenue based off of 4.1770 mils. Just over $2.1 million. And that's about what we have collected right now year-to-date.
Okay. 305 is the occupational tax.
No changes here. Did come down, I increased it just a nominal amount based on this year-to-date average.
All right. 310, Local Enabling Tax. So we've got a few different things in here. Including... This is where we see tax penalties. This is where we see transfer taxes. Earned income tax current. Amusement admissions tax. Mechanical devices tax. That's on, you know, video poker and jukeboxes, et cetera. That raises a total of just over 1.1 million.
Slightly increased over 2024 based on our current year-to-date collections.
321. Business license permits. So we've got towing licenses. These are things we set in the fee resolution, you may all recall. Occupancy licenses, this is for rental units. Yard sale permits. Twenty-six plucky entrepreneurs had yard sales. We'll hopefully have yard sales next year. Transient retail permits. Outdoor dining permits. Amusement licenses. Special events permits. Walking tour licenses. Carriage ride licenses. Cable television franchise. So this one is a tax of up to 5% of cable television bills that we are allowed to collect. We can set it lower. We can set it to zero if we want. We set it at 5%. It is collected by Comcast from the customer. Comcast does not pay this to us. The customer pays this and Comcast collects it and then remits it to us. And it's only on cable television. It's not on internet or phone service. Any questions there? 322. Non-business licenses and permits. So this is land use. This has to do with, you know, if you're getting a permit to do something with your property. Building permits, recycling permits, building permits, UCC versus non-UCC sign permits. Zoning certification letters. We can't budget that because we don't know what people are going to apply for this year. Highway occupancy permits. Those are those fees we talk about for cutting into asphalt, that sort of thing. Doing work that disturbs roads or sidewalks. Solicitation licenses, that's about $30,000. Any questions there? 331, Fines and Forfeits. So we have penalties from the district magistrate, from the clerks, clerk of courts, code violation fines. Hard to, hard to project. Magistrates, state police fines. So this is, you know, penalties for behavior that we would try to discourage. Again, hard to budget, but based on historic data, this is what we come up with. Any questions there? All right. 341. Interest earnings. So interest on our checking. Money we're earning on our Pliget accounts. As you can see, we're making a pretty nice rate of return on our investments there. 342. Royalties from cell phone tower rentals. So that's a nice chunk that we get for letting cell phone providers use our stoplights and infrastructure there. 351, Federal Grants. We're hoping to see that swell dramatically, but we never know.
The more we recycle, the higher this number gets. That's the headline there.
Yes. Yeah, are you on 354, the recycling grant? Yeah. So this, we try to stress this every year, folks. There's so many reasons to recycle, to just separate out items. We get money back from the state based on the tonnage of recycling that we divert from landfills. So please take the time to separate your trash out for us. It helps the borough and it also helps the birds and fishes and environment. 355, State Shared Revenue. Can you talk a little bit about that, please, Charles?
There's this thing called public utility tax. State collects these, or not the state, the utility commission takes, collects these off of your electric bills, for example. And then they're the cost-revenue share among all municipalities throughout the Commonwealth. The other one big here is alcoholic beverage licenses. So earlier tonight, we had a public hearing where you approved another liquor license to come into the borough. The borough will receive a share of the cost to have that license in the municipality every year. State Pension Aid. This is subsidized by the state through Act 205. This is what we estimate, $266,000 to come to us next year. And that's based on the aggregate wages of our pensioners in the program. Pension program.
Any questions there? Okay. 357. This is where we see things like the pillow tax.
That's pretty standard. It's pretty stagnant over the last few years, $175,000 for pillow tax.
And that is money that is specifically allocated for police expenses.
Correct.
361, Charges for Services. So this has to do with a lot of things that we do for our residents. So we've got 300 subdivision and land development. So that's permit application fees that people are paying to us. Zoning hearing board fees. So if you were to request a variance to do something on your property that is not a typically allowed use, a conforming use, you would have to go through an application process and have a zoning hearing where they would decide whether or not you could have that variance. And that application fee is $1,000. So that's, assuming we'll probably have one next year. We could have more, we never know. RRUO inspection fees, that's rental units. We inspect annually. Sales of merchandise, including our cool little Geisberg pins and flags. Accident reports, anytime we have to provide people with copies of things that have concerned them. Civil service testing fees, reimbursements for postage. Special police services, we get reimbursements. Public Works reimbursements, towing and impound reimbursements, police reimbursements, parking reimbursements. Stormwater reimbursements. Engineering fees, Main Street Gettysburg, Gettysburg Fire Department reimbursements. And then more reimbursements for insurance claims, jury duty, these things are not budgeted. CDBG. So this is where we had the expense line in a previous fund. And this is the offsetting reimbursement that we get from other governmental sources. 363, Highways and Streets.
So here you will see I added, so you have line A and then line B, and then you have a line BB. So wherever you see the BB, that's the increment increase over the $1.50 policy that we discussed earlier.
And we've got, under there, we've got 220 is the RPP permits. 221 is the LPP. That's residential versus local use. Borough parking lots, the county lot, the parking facility, the garage. As you can see, that is a half a million dollars in revenue for the borough projected for next year, just shy of a half a million dollars. Parking facility passes that people purchase ahead of time. And then monies for Penn dot winter maintenance contracts. Any questions there? 367, Culture and Recreation. So we get, every year, we get a few donations from folks who want to support local events. They want to just support the general government function. Or they want to, very frequently, they want to give a little money to the police. So that's where we would see those donations hit. 390.
Gettysburg Truck Sentinel, most people aren't familiar with that.
Correct.
It's not a lot of money, but I think the thought and sincerity behind it is important. If you remember, years ago, a gentleman named Charlie Probst was the owner and operator of Spectra Coat here in Gettysburg. And Charlie since passed away. But at the time, in 2015, he came to the borough with the understanding that large trucks continuously do damage to our infrastructure, specifically streetlights and things of that sort in town. to our infrastructure, specifically streetlights and things of that sort in town, and there was a large discussion at the time about how we mitigate some of our truck challenges, of which we still are having those discussions. But Charlie came up with and has funded through Spectra Coat an increment in our insurance premiums to provide additional coverage for public infrastructure, streetlights and things that are damaged and are not reclaimed through insurance claims because someone was able to drive away undetected. So that's, even though it's only $500, it's, I think, worthy calling out. Spectra Coat being good neighbors.
Charlie was my father-in-law, and it's really nice to hear his name still spoken in warm regard here in town.
Yeah.
He was a hell of a guy. So it's a small amount of revenue, but there it is. All right, 392 is our last revenue line for Fund One. Transfers, nothing scheduled there, so.
So that's it. When you offset revenues and expenses, you're at about a deficit of $553,000.
of the funds remaining, probably the the biggest one is going to be 18. I'm aware of the hour, I'm also aware that we really want to try to get this done between tonight and our next meeting, so I would suggest we work our way through Fund 18 here tonight, so that we're not leaving too much for ourselves next week, and hopefully we can avoid additional meetings, provided we can get through all of the material. Is everybody okay with that?
Could we take maybe a five-minute break?
We absolutely can take a five-minute break. Do I need to adjourn?
Just recess.
Five minutes, folks, five-minute recess, please be back here at 9:22. Everybody, let's dive back in on Fund 18, please.
So let me preface Fund 18 in that this is not legally required to be balanced, and it is very much not balanced this year. And we'll talk about that, but if we do revenues first, there's only two revenue streams in Fund 18 for 2025. One is the Act 101, Section 902 Recycling Grant. We talked about this last year, but this was the year that you formally budgeted for the Leaf Vac truck.
Right.
So 300,000 will come to the borough once we get that piece of equipment. Robbie, when are we supposed to get that, do you remember?
Well, the chassis is here, but the bodies are being made, the body is going to be being made, so we're hoping to see it the end of December, most likely not till January.
And then the other revenue is interest off of current investments in the fund. So then if you go to the expense side of Fund 18, if you remember, we talked break field last week. Oh. Give me just a second, real quick. I must have inadvertently mislabeled an item in in your folder. So in Fund 18, Department 409.
Yes.
What you have in your folder is not correct, so we'll do it right out of the software, if you don't mind. We have expenses for the Welcome Center under item, line item 310. It's architectural services through Crabtree, Roarball and Associates, they are our architects. In line item 313, $10,500. This is also related to the Gettysburg Welcome Center for Engineering Services from C.S. We mentioned last week the software conversion that we are currently undergoing, so this pays for the second half, so half of that conversion has already been paid for. So in Fund 409, there is 36,000 and change that covers the conversion fees and the first year fees for that software. Buildings and maintenance, this is for Scott Brothers Contracting, are we still doing that this year?
We have to get, I think, three more quotes, the remaining balance was a little bit over the
Okay.
thing, so we have to get three.
This was for some painting projects we had here in the municipal building, budgeted for 27,000.
So we would need it, but it may not be that contractor.
Okay. So those are the line items in 409. 410 is correctly labeled. So here you see the computer software conversion fees again to Edmonds GovTech, this is, this is split out by a percent usage by the departments that will ultimately be utilizing those systems. So that's the only capital expense in 410 for 2025. 413, you'll see Edmonds listed again. And we're in 414, and planning, same thing, Edmonds conversion, their share. Public Works, you'll see their share of Edmonds conversion. We are getting into some bigger ticket items here, you'll see that we just talked about, let's start with 373, Buildings and Maintenance. This is design costs, Robbie, is that right, for the new Public Works facility? I believe that's correct.
Correct.
Yeah, that's 60,000 through largely C.S. Davidson and the architect that they are working with. Do you know who they're working with?
Excuse me?
Who's the architect we're using for that?
I don't really.
Is that MEP Design up there?
We can get you that.
Yeah, I don't know for sure.
This is, 60,000 was a number requested by Chad Claybaugh for, to support that project. 740, we can see our Leaf Vac, the 300,000 we just talked about on the revenue side. Our local match for that, 142,000. You'll also see the one-third cost, item C there is the one-third cost for the skid loader, that was discussed last week, two-thirds of that cost is going to be covered by GBSWA, Stormwater Authority. And you'll see year two of five for the new dump truck that we talked about last year. One of five is actually going to be paid for this year, as we discussed last week, and there will be a motion on your November agenda to get that ball rolling. So even though it's kind of nice, you get two of the five years paid for in essentially eight, 18 months. And UCC filing fees, the nominal fee there. 439, 313, or 439, rather. This is the local match, the 313,000, there's a local match for our flap grant, that is what's covered here under 313. the Gettysburg Interloop, the Washington Street Project, a total of 1.9 million, and then you can see the offsets from our other partners that are funding that project in concert with us, so ultimately, there's an expenditure of $603,000 from Fund 18 to support this. All said and done, after you look at that, revenue over, oh, wait, there's more, please hold. 445, you'll see the Edmonds again listed here. I also put another year worth of repainting our meters. We, how many did we get paint done this year, Robbie, do you remember?
Oh, we've got, I think, 32 poles done this year.
Okay, and some of those were the large
Yeah.
combined streetlight ones, yeah. So we would like to continue that, everything on the square and essentially a block in each direction is largely done, and we'll consent, continue repainting those. Might not be concentrating a lot on Baltimore Street based on our raise application, which is coming up, well, actually, we talked about it last week, under Department 409. Okay. Last but not least, we have I talked to Al Moyer about this today. Last year, we had budgeted 10,000, just like here, with the idea of giving GARA a little seed money to start a capital fund, which has not yet occurred, so they do not have a formal capital plan, and they do not have a separate account for these monies. I'd like to keep it in the budget, in the event that they do get that put together, and then we can give them 20,000 for the two years, but right now, we're still holding the 2024 money, and if you don't take this out, we'll hold this 2025 money as well until they have a formal capital improvement plan in place. With that, revenue